Guess we better determine the quorum. Roll call.
Sarah Savileczek. Larry Chesney.
Present.
James Barnes.
Here.
Thomas Bruce.
Here.
Francine Donchik.
Here.
Philip Peran.
Present.
Michael Lawson.
Present.
Mr. Chair, before we proceed any further, I need to put something on the record. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Savileczek, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
This is Nate Edwards, and I just wanted to get on the record real quick that you're aware and consent to the phone call the Chair on being recorded.
Yes, I am.
And you also consent to it?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
If I can piggyback onto that.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
If I can, Sarah is calling in. She can only hear all of us speak when we're speaking into the microphone, so make sure you speak into the microphone.
Okay. So with that being said, announce yourself, announce your name before you speak, so Sarah knows who's speaking. Let's see, Mr. Haran.
Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
I have you, because of the wonderful technology, I am screaming. I understand that the screaming might be a little bit slower, but I can hear you and see you.
Oh. Uh-oh. Okay. Mr. Haran, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Edwards, could we have the ethics law announcement, please?
Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, you have received a gift or loan, you have a pecuniary interest, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship, or you provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter being considered tonight, you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And you must furthermore abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it is clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you have had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary Trevor Lloyd, could you read the appeal procedure, please?
Gladly. Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information and appeal procedure and application fee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Do we have any public comment?
No general public comment.
Do we, is there any discussion on the agenda?
I move to approve.
Aye, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from last month's meeting.
I make a motion to approve.
Aye, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. See, move on to public hearings. Mr. Lloyd, would you like to explain item 8A?
Will do. Yeah, item 8A is a master plan amendment, case number WMPA-17-0012. This is Spanish Springs' general commercial request for possible action, hearing, and discussion to amend the Spanish Springs area plan to modify policy SS.1.3F, which currently limits the general commercial regulatory zone properties within the regulatory zone of general commercial prior to August 17, 2004. The amendment would remove the data, the date limitation in this policy. If the amendment is adopted, final approval will be contingent upon a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. And here for, to provide the presentation is Senior Planner Kelly Mullen.
Does anybody have any ethics disclosures? Any ex parte communication or anything? Okay. Kelly, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. I'm Kelly Mullen, Senior Planner with Washoe County. You may be familiar with, that there is currently a policy within the Spanish Springs area plan. If I can get to the next slide. Looks like this is not working today. Have the next slide, please. Thank you. So there's a policy currently within the Spanish Springs area plan that limits the general commercial regulatory zone to those areas that were already zoned general commercial as of August 2004. That policy from the Spanish Springs area plan is highlighted in yellow on the screen. And the area in the strike-through text is what is proposed to be removed with this amendment. That would remove the date limitation, and I'd like to point out that this policy is only applicable in the Spanish Springs suburban character management area. So this amendment was initiated by the county commission back in November, and there's some history to how we got here, and it's a little bit convoluted, and I apologize for that. But I think the background is critical to understanding the reasoning of why this amendment is being brought forth. So I'd like to walk through how we got to the amendment that we're reviewing tonight. This proposal actually stems from another master plan amendment that you may remember from early 2017. There was a request to amend the Spanish Springs area plan at that time to allow for RV storage or the storage of operable vehicles in neighborhood commercial with a special use permit. And last spring, that request was denied by the Planning Commission. The applicant for that master plan amendment then appealed the denial to the county commission, and the county commission reversed that denial, stating that the required findings for approval could be made. And that vote was four to one, with Commissioner Hartung dissenting. As part of a standard processing requirement, they then had to send that request back to the Planning Commission for a report. And in that report from the Planning Commission, this commission had indicated that you were still not in favor of that request. Then the board heard the item again in August for final approval. But out of the gate at that meeting, Commissioner Hartung had requested that the rest of the commission members consider a compromise. And that compromise was requesting that they deny that request, deny that amendment, in exchange for providing an exception that would allow for the applicant's parcel to potentially have RV storage on it in the future. So the county commission opted to support that request for compromise, and in the end, they voted to reverse the earlier decision and deny the amendment. After that, staff went about investigating alternative options that would potentially lead to RV storage being allowed on that applicant's property, which you may remember is at the corner of La Posada and Pyramid Highway. It's the old ballpark property. And that property is currently zoned neighborhood commercial, where RV storage is not allowed. In Spanish Springs, RV storage would only potentially be allowed in general commercial with a special use permit, or allowed by right in industrial. So the surrounding properties around that, at that corner of La Posada and Pyramid, those are all zoned either general commercial or neighborhood commercial. So it was determined that it would be not feasible for industrial to be an appropriate fit at that corner. So ruling out industrial, looking at general commercial was considered to be the most feasible path forward at that point. But as you know, Spanish Springs area plan policy 1.3F, which is what we're looking at tonight, that limits general commercial to those areas that were zoned general commercial as of 2004. So tonight, with this current amendment, this is that alternative path forward stemming out of the board's decision to find another way to compromise on the previous request. And in November, they did initiate this amendment. So apart from the history that's led to this request, I think there's some additional details that you may wish to consider in your review. First is that Spanish Springs area plan already limits commercial and industrial. It limits the acreage of that to 9.86 percent of the suburban character management area. And right now, we are already at 9.65 percent with commercial and industrial acreage in that area. Also, the area plan identifies the suburban character management area as a designated growth area for Spanish Springs. And right now, we have about, we have over 1,600 lots that have been approved for subdivisions but have not yet been recorded. So as you know, of course, we are expecting growth in that area. There is the possibility that there may be the need for additional flexibility in offering commercial services in the Spanish Springs area. Also, you may already be aware of another policy within the area plan that requires commercial zone changes, intensifications, to demonstrate that they serve the community, the local community, as opposed to the larger region. Additionally, if any zone change intensifications were requested, a master plan amendment, a regulatory zone amendment, those would still have to go through the normal review process. This request was heard at the January 12 Spanish Springs Citizen Advisory Board, and the CAB voted unanimously to recommend approval of their amendment. There was one public comment in opposition to the request. There were several members of the audience who did ask questions. Most of those questions related to standards and requirements, if there was a potential future project at that property at Pyramid and La Posada. There are also some questions about other existing businesses in Spanish Springs, as well as the overall scope of the project. Staff does believe that the proposal is in compliance with all of the required findings shown on the screen. We do recommend adopting that amendment, certifying the resolution, and authorizing the Chair to sign the resolution. If you agree with that recommendation, a possible motion is shown on the screen. With that, I'd like to conclude my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. No more than this time, Kelly. Do we have an applicant presentation?
Washoe County is the applicant for this.
Well, we have, you are the applicant. Okay.
But I thought it was because of that one special note, though.
Any public comment?
We do.
Make sure and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Gordon Astrom. I live at 200 Horizon Ridge, just a little bit north of Spanish Springs.
I'm sorry. Can you speak into the microphone, please?
My name's Gordon Astrom. I live at 200 Horizon Ridge, just a little bit north of Spanish Springs. And I'm here in opposition of putting RVs down on that corner where the ballpark is. Basically, if it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, more than likely, it is a duck. So although this is just changing a date on a piece of paper, in essence, it's putting RVs on that corner. Now, we've, Kelly's already gone through the listing of all the background of it. But the one thing I want you to note is on August 8, Commissioner, actually Commissioner Hartzog, said that putting RVs on that corner would follow or would supply none of the five items that have to be, or three of the five items that have to be required. None of them were satisfied putting RVs on that corner. The character of the community would change by having those things there, and it's already been denied by you, as the Planning Commission, and also by the board. This isn't a simple change. What you're trying to do is change what should go on an industrial piece of property to go on general commercial. In storage, you're only allowed to put operable vehicles in industrial. And with doing that, you're putting, like the duck said, we're putting the industrial there for all intents and purposes, although we're using a special permit, general commercials, and things like that to get to there. And so far, you have, the way I see it, at least, you have two choices: to accept a neighborhood commercial office zoning for that area and put in a personal storage facility, or to change the master plan to conform to what you want to build there. This is what's allowed there right now. Neighborhood commercial office, we can put in a storage facility like that. This is what they want to put there with the RVs. This facility is built per code. It's actually right across from where I live. It's in an industrial area. And I don't want this sitting down there on the main street of my town. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
No further public comment.
You know what? It's still right there. Can I fill a card out afterwards? Thanks.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, and my name's Mark Sullivan. I actually used to sit on the Citizens Advisory Board out in Spanish Springs for, I think, about three and a half years. I think I probably at the Planning Commission meeting when this property or this plan was originally approved back, I think it was 2004 is what they said. And I think the vision of what the valley was in 2004 has certainly changed to what the vision of it probably is today. Now, when you look at that piece of property, and my kids used to play ball there, obviously, I mean, it's a, for commercial, there's no question it's a commercial piece of property. But when you put industrial in there, and you guys know as well as I do, whatever that zoning is, anything can go in there. It's industrially zoned property now, and you're not looking at the actual use, you're going to be looking at what the land use is. If you put industrial in, you can have any kind of industrial use in there. That can change at any time in the future. So then you think, is that really an industrial site? And it really isn't. And when you think about commercial development, at least the way I think about it, and the way that, actually, the county has trained me to think about it for the last 25 years, is kind of a feathering. You know, you have an intense use, which is a highway, and then you have a, commercial uses that are right in that area, because there's residences that are there, so you're trying to cut trips down, get reverse traffic flows, employment there, those types of things. But then backing off into less intense areas as far as traffic goes and interaction with residences and citizens and traffic in between commercial uses, that's where you typically have those industrial uses, where Martin Maria Pitt is, you know, which is several miles down the road. More remote areas, if you're going to have intense uses like that. And the visual aspect of it, I mean, I remember we used to fight all the time about having signs on the side of the fences, you know, the baseball teams would sell, so they could raise money, so the kids could, it could offset some of those costs. And we used to have that complaint all the time. The visual blight of that, well, you see the picture of these motorhomes behind a, what, six-foot fence? I mean, obviously, if you're going to complain about visual blight, there, certainly there's something there. So I just wanted to add my two cents in it. Certainly, I've been out in Spanish Springs for 25 years, as far as a property owner out there and living out there, and it has changed. And I think that we need to kind of look at things a little differently than we did 15 years ago. But some of those things, you know, the basic plan, I don't think you want to change. I mean, I think we do need to do some things. I also happen to be a, I sit on the Housing Authority, and with the housing costs rising like they are, I mean, we put a ring around the city years ago, right, Truckee Meadows service area. You don't provide services outside that. I mean, those are the kinds of things we need to look at if we're going to attack some of these housing issues, and we're going to bring down costs, or at least maintain costs or keep them flat. So I think there are things that we need to look at. We do need to look at making some changes going forward. This one, I don't think is a, is an excellent change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm a little confused. Sir, you said you were a member of the Citizens Advisory Board for Spanish Springs, yes?
That I used to sit on there. I did, yes.
Oh, but you're not presently?
No.
Okay, then I have a question for staff. I'm a little confused about some of this. There was one public comment at the CAB that was against this. What was that comment?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes. You said that at the Citizens Advisory Board, it was passed unanimously by the CAB, but there was one comment in opposition from the public. What was that comment?
Thank you for the question. That public comment was from Mr. Astrom, who I believe he had some similar points to make at that evening as well.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing there's no other public comment, I'm going to bring it back to the commission for questions. No questions? Oh, Francine.
Kelly, please. You say this is brought forward from staff, but it had to have been generated from someone requesting this, for staff to do this. It isn't just something you decided to do, correct? So there is someone with a plan of what to put there, which is, even though it may not occur, the mobile home park that we, or the RV park that we denied originally. Is that correct? Is that why you're trying to change the code?
Thank you for the question. So the impetus for bringing this particular request is, it does have some relationship to the master plan amendment that was heard last year, but it directly comes out of the compromise that the county commission was seeking, and specifically what Commissioner Hartung was proposing in terms of trying to find another way to allow for that particular property to potentially be able to have storage of operable vehicles on it at some point in the future without allowing for storage of operable vehicles in all neighborhood commercial areas within Spanish Springs with a special use permit.
Thank you for the clarification.
Go ahead with your, I want a question. Kelly, I, it just dawned on me, if this would be approved, and they went ahead with this storage area, under the conditional use permit process, would that allow for increasing screening and wall heights so that these recreational vehicles possibly would not be visible from the street?
Thank you for the question. So potentially, yes. There would be kind of a long road if this were to be approved, and if they were to then seek a zone change to general commercial, and if they were to get that, then potentially go through a special use permit process for RV storage on that property. We do have some very specific design guidelines, the Western theme design guidelines, that are specific to personal storage areas, which my understanding is that they would like to do on that property as well. Those would be applicable that also address screening, but certainly, one of the main things that we, or one of the, you know, primary things that we do look at during that special use permit process is impacts to the surrounding communities, surrounding neighborhood, screening, buffering, those kinds of things would certainly be on the table.
Okay, thank you. Yes. It seems to me that the thing that the Planning Commission voted against last year had actually been presented to the Spanish Springs CAB prior to coming up and getting here. And at that time, did they not vote on what was the, I don't remember how to phrase it exactly, to put it there that we voted against at that time? Did they not vote on recommending, did they not in fact recommend against allowing us to approve the master plan amendment that would change that lot to an RV park, shall we say?
So I want to make sure that I'm understanding your question correctly. You're asking specifically focused completely on the previous master plan amendment that went through last year?
Yes.
At this point. And that request was, it was literally for changing one section within the use table within the Spanish Springs area plan. Neighborhood commercial right now in Spanish Springs does not allow for the storage of operable vehicles. And what the request was, it was narrow in focus in terms of it was requesting that it be changed from not allowed to would require a special use permit to be allowed.
Yeah.
And the CAB was not in favor of that request. This board, this commission was not in favor of that request either.
That's, I wanted to clarify that at that time, the Spanish Springs CAB did vote against that, but it has followed through, and I read through Appendix D, word for word, and they did vote unanimously for it. And I'm, I live in Spanish Springs, and we're a stubborn bunch. So, and I wanted to clarify that for the board, because had the Spanish Springs CAB voted against it, I would have voted against it. Since they voted unanimously for it, I think that's a public opinion that we have to respect. And that's my comment. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Any other questions? Then I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back to the commission for a discussion.
Mr. Chair, I need to interject something. With respect to the ultimate vote of each of you, you have judgment calls to make based on the evidence that you heard during the hearing tonight, and you're free to take all of that into consideration, including your understanding of what transpired at the CAB in its review and discussion of this same item. But your decision ultimately needs to be based on the findings in the staff report, and you need to make those findings one way or the other, based on the evidence. And you, in doing that, you can't simply dispense with the findings and embrace the conclusions of the CAB. So that can factor into your decision, but your decision needs to be based on the evidence and the findings. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Well, before we get to a motion, I will not support a motion to approve. I think that when reviewing this item, you know, a couple of times now, I, still I'm not in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Haran.
Commissioner.
Yes?
Can I ask Commissioner Haran to expand?
No? You can ask.
Okay. Is there any further discussion before I call for a motion?
Yeah, please. I'm uncertain, and I'm uncertain, that's why I'm looking for some clarification. I've looked at enough staff recommendations to know that they're, they're well-intended, and that they are looking for, for not being able to say no to something. It's not that they advocate for anything necessarily. They're always looking, can I say no? That's my understanding from staff. So with respect to Nate, and seeing, you know, we have to make our decision based on the findings, I also say that there's a lot of judgment. And so I respect Commissioner Haran, who's been here for quite a while, and that's why, Phil, I'm asking for, you know, if you're opposed to this, I'd like to understand a little bit more why, because we have someone who lives there that's in favor, that is read the materials intimately familiar. I'm on the fence, and I want to make, I want to make an informed vote.
I'm not sure I can make your... I think I'm going to, I'm not sure I can, comments will make you any more informed. I will expand a little bit in the fact that I think that we are making a change for a specific piece of property. And, and, you know, I, we were against that before, and I'm still against it, because I think it's a very specific application for a piece of property, not for the overall, anyhow you want to dress it up. I think it's for a specific piece of property.
This is Commissioner Chesney. I'd like to make a comment. The origin, the original application that we turned down was going to change the designation for neighborhood commercial to allow all the neighborhood commercial in the Spanish Springs area to allow the parking of operable vehicles. This takes that away from the entire Spanish Springs area, and it allows for...
This takes that away from the entire Spanish Springs area and allows for this applicant to apply for an application to change this particular piece of property to general commercial, this and this piece of property only. And that's what, as I recall, what we voted against in the beginning is we didn't want everything zone neighborhood commercial to be, to be allowed to have parking of operable vehicles. So based on the findings, I have to, I have to support this at this time. So...
Mr. Chair, so just a clarification.
John Chek.
It's not making any formalized change. It's only removing that August 17th, 2004 cutoff designation. It still has to go through amendment, all the rest of amendment processes and everything else. It's not blanketly saying you can do this. It's just removing that one date on there, and then it still has to go through all the zone amendment and master amendment, all the regulatory zone changes. This doesn't guarantee that it's going to happen. It's just allows that one date process to be removed, if I'm correct.
Well, it allows, it allows the applicant to apply for this other change.
And then it starts fresh again.
That's it.
Okay, any further discussion? Then I would call for... Yes?
Thank you. And I guess I'm either going to ask staff for, and because Commissioner Doncheck, and I'm, you know, scrolling through the staff report here, but just to seek clarification, what is being proposed is to extend the date. Is that correct?
Eliminate.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. The request is to eliminate that date, remove the date limitation. So the area that is, the section of that policy that specifically speaks to general commercial only being allowed in Spanish Springs area where general commercial was in 2004, that sentence essentially goes away.
Okay, thank you. So, so just so I'm certain that I'm tracking what, what is before us tonight is to remove the date limitation, not, not that specific property for changes to general commercial.
That is 100% correct. It is just for the, removing the date limitation.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any further discussion? I'm calling for a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Just, Mr. Bruce?
Yes.
I move that after giving reasonable, reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt master plan amendment case number W M P A 17-012 to amend the Spanish Springs area plan by removing the date limitation within policy S S dot 1 dot 3 per N F, having made the following five findings in accordance with the Washoe County Section 110 dot 820 dot 15 per N D and the three findings required by the Spanish Springs area plan. I further move to certify the resolution contained as Exhibit A of this staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Do I have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Doncheck seconds. Let's call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed.
Noted that Commissioner Haran is opposed. Yeah, motion passes. Let's see, item...
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, real quickly, was that a six to one final vote count with Commissioner Haran opposed?
Yes.
Just for the record, because it requires a two-thirds support of the planning commission, so you needed five on that. I wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Okay, we're going to move on to item 8B. Mr. Lloyd, would you give us a description of 8B, please?
Yeah, this is special use permit case number W S U P 17 dash 0021 and administrative permit case number W A D M I N 17 dash 0010 for Dodge Flat Solar. That's request for possible action, hearing and discussion by the Washoe County Planning Commission to provisionally approve a special use permit for a 200 megawatt solar energy center with associated grading and administrative permit to allow for two private communication antennas over 45 feet in height. The project site consists of four parcels totaling 1,616 acres and is classified as a renewable energy production industrial use type. Approximately 1,200 acres would be developed to include a photovoltaic solar field, substation, switchyard, 200 megawatt energy storage system and ancillary facilities, including two 90-foot tall private communication antennas. The project would connect to an existing 345 K V transmission line that crosses the subject property. Proposed grading includes 307,000 cubic yards of cut and 264,000 cubic yards of fill and a disturbing area of approximately 1,200 acres in size. The request also seeks to vary parking and landscaping standards by waiving them. The proposal will require a conformance review with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan for a project of regional significance because it includes an electric substation, a transmission line that carries more than 60 K V, and a facility that generates electricity greater than 5 megawatts. If the project is provisionally approved by the Planning Commission, it will also require subsequent action by the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners to sponsor an amendment to the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan to identify the location of the new substation and the regional utility corridor, on the regional utility corridor map of the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. Here again for the presentation is Senior Planner Kelly Mullen.
Before you start, Kelly, are there any disclosures, any ethics disclosures or export communications from any of the commissioners? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Mullen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Lucky you.
Good evening again, commissioners. For the record, Kelly Mullen with Washoe County. So the overall project site is located a couple miles northwest of Wadsworth. It is off of Olling House Road, and that would be accessed via Highway 447. The project encompasses four parcels that altogether total a little over 1,600 acres. They are zoned general rural. So the overview of the request, this project involves a 200-megawatt energy center, approximately 1,200 of the 1,600-acre site is expected to be developed. The majority of that would be a solar field. Project also includes a substation, switchyard, associated facilities, including two private communication antennas that are overnight, excuse me, that are 90 feet tall, and the project would connect to an existing high-voltage transmission line that crosses the site right now. The development would include over 300,000 cubic yards of grading, and it does seek to also waive the parking and landscaping standards as part of this request. Now, there are a few different permit types that we're looking at this evening, so I want to touch on each type briefly. A special use permit is required for the use type for renewable energy production, also required for the grading that's being done. The administrative permit is required because the two private communication antennas are over 45 feet in height. Additional height can be granted with a, an administrative permit being issued. The project is also considered a project of regional significance because it includes an electrical substation and because it is a facility that generates over 5 megawatts. Again, this is a 200-megawatt facility. And then if the project is approved, it will also require an amendment to the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, the regional utility corridor map due to the substation, and due to the fact that this project includes both, is a project of regional significance and would require a change to the regional plan, if it is approved here this evening, it would next go to the Board of County Commissioners before potentially then heading on also to the Regional Planning Commission and Regional Planning Governing Board. So this is an overview of the four parcels that together total 1,600 acres. That majority of work is being conducted on Parcels 1, 2, and 3. I won't speak about Parcel 4 much this evening, mainly because the portion of that that is included in this project includes a well for the site and some utility easements. That northern parcel, Parcel 1, that's where you'll see the substation, the switchyard, the energy storage building. Half of that parcel will also have solar panel arrays on it. Almost all of Parcels 2 and 3 will be developed with solar panels. Primary access to the site would be off of Highway 447, which you see curving along the right side of the screen, and Olling House does jet off of that, goes through the northern part of Parcel 3. So this is a closer look at Parcel 1. This is that northernmost parcel that has the switching station, the substation, the battery storage yard, excuse me, battery storage building. And you can see that through the middle of the parcel, from the top right to lower left, there are those existing high-voltage transmission lines that the project will be connecting to. These are elevations of two of the pieces of that, that Parcel 1, both the switchyard and the substation. And you can see on there the 90-foot tall monopoles. I do want to point out that the height of those is necessary in order to create a direct line of sight to a communication hub in Ferley. This is a site plan of Parcel 2. Again, almost the entire parcel will be developed with solar panels. You'll also see on the right side that there's a note about some native slope revegetation being done. There is an area there that had been affected by previous mining activities, so the applicant is looking to bring, bring that back to natural slopes. This is Parcel 3, similar to the last slide. It would be developed, almost a good chunk of it, most of it would be developed with solar panels, and you can see that on the screen as well. So this is an example of solar panels that would be similar to what would be used on site without the paving that's shown there. The highest point of the panel when it's rotated would be approximately 12 feet, and as part of the conditions of approval, the panels would need to either use a anti-reflective coating or other anti-reflective technology. So this is a picture of the existing high-voltage transmission lines that run across the site right now on Parcel 1, and the project would connect to these. This is an overview shot of the project site that's looking north from Olling House Road. And as you can see, this is a rural high desert area. There's little vegetation, low-lying brush and grasses. This is a photo simulation that was provided by the applicant, and this shows what the project would look like from the intersection of 447 and Olling House. Standing at that intersection, we're looking northwest at the project, and in the distance, you can kind of see some, some black areas kind of in the middle of that, that photo there, and that shows what the project would look like from this particular intersection. So as you saw from those previous photos, this is definitely a remote rural area. There is limited vegetation. There are relatively gentle slopes across that, those properties. And that area that surrounds the project site, it is sparsely populated. There is very little development nearby. So the surrounding properties are zoned general rural, and there are a mix of private and federal ownership of those parcels. To the east of the easternmost parcels, you'll find tribal land by the Paiute, the Pyramid Lake Paiute tribe. And again, this is a very rural and largely undeveloped area. The applicant has indicated that there are a number of benefits that the project would bring to the area. I just want to run through some of those quickly. Of course, this, this 200-megawatt solar facility would definitely augment Northern Nevada's renewable energy supply. It would also help to facilitate reliability of the grid during times of peak demand. On an annual basis, it would create approximately 500,000 megawatt hours of power. It would also reduce on an annual basis 510,000 tons of carbon dioxide. During construction, it's anticipated that the project would create approximately 500 jobs. After the project is complete, there are anticipated to be 10 full-time off-site jobs. Public notice, notice of this hearing and the Citizen Advisory Board meeting were provided to owners of 54 parcels that were within a mile and change of the project site. Those are shown on the map. This was heard by the Citizen Advisory Board back in October. It was an informational-only item, so no action was taken, but we did have members of the audience in attendance who asked a number of great questions about the project. Some of those focused on what benefits the project would bring, what types of jobs it might create, the schedule of construction for the project, accessing the project site, how it would be secured, questions about fire suppression, and dealing with dust issues. There were no other comments received from the public regarding this proposal. So I haven't gone into all of the details of the project. As you likely saw, the application was in the vicinity of about 800 pages, but I do want to point out that numerous local, regional, state, and federal agencies did review this project and provided comments and conditions of approval on many aspects of the project design. And in the proposed location and with the proposed conditions of approval, it is anticipated that the potential impacts would be mitigated to the extent possible. I would also like to point out an addendum that you should have received by email yesterday and hard copy today with a request for some language changes to the conditions from Nevada Department of Wildlife and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Staff does believe that the required findings can be met. We are recommending provisional approval with conditions subject to a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. And if you agree with staff's recommendation, a possible motion is displayed for you on the screen. With that, I'd like to conclude my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant and applicant's representatives are also here as well.
Any questions, Kelly? Thank you, Kelly. Do we have an applicant presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members, staff. My name is John Burkett. For the record, I'm serving as the local government liaison person on behalf of the Next Era team, and it's my pleasure to be here finally with this project tonight. And it's also a pleasure to be back in this room with, with the staff members here. I retired from the county a few years ago after serving for 10 years as the Assistant County Manager, and at, at the end of my, my tenure, I was actually county manager. So it's, it's a pleasure to be back here myself, like, like you do. Hopefully not tonight, but we spent a lot of long evenings here in this room, so hopefully tonight, Mr. Chairman, this isn't one of those long evenings. Since retiring, I had the opportunity to become associated with this project and this team, and it's a real pleasure to be able to introduce the Dodge Flat Solar Project, the Next Era company, and, and the team, portion of the team behind me here tonight. I'd like to introduce from Next Era, Joe Macapitas and Eric Koster, a couple of our engineering folks here tonight from G C W, Todd Kelly, and from D U Dec Engineering, David Hochar. So also with us, and I will introduce him now, is our project manager, Jesse Marshall. And Jesse will make the presentation to, to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction, John, and nice to see everybody here, commissioners. Appreciate the time this evening. I think Kelly did a great job of covering most of the stuff related to our project, so we've provided a little bit of context here, a little information about our company, our experience with similar projects in other parts of the, the country, as well as other projects we have in the state. And, you know, we're free to answer questions afterwards, so I guess if this thing is working here again now. All right, so we figured a good place to start would be just an introduction to our company. Our applicant is Dodge Flat Solar LLC. It's just a subsidiary of our, our company, Next Era Energy Resources. So Next Era Energy is our parent company. It's a publicly traded company. It's made up of two main subsidiaries, those being Florida Power and Light, one of the biggest utilities in the country in South Florida. And outside of Florida, we're an unregulated, what they call independent power producer called Next Era Energy Resources. Those are the two main companies underneath our parent. Some of the other ones are listed here. As you can see, you know, 4.7 million customers in, in South Florida that we serve as a utility like... like NV Energy. And outside of Florida, we're the largest generator of renewable energy from the wind So we want you guys to understand who you're dealing with here. We are guys that have a lot of experience from the inception of a project, finding a site that we think is suitable, based on a lot of different constraints and access to transmission and things that we make, we think make a good renewable energy project. And this just gives you an idea about our financial capabilities and comparing us to some of our competitors out in the market. So just some quick stuff here. We're far and away the largest wind energy company in the country. We've got almost 14,000 megawatts of wind installed throughout North America, U.S. and Canada. We also have a very big backlog of projects, either under construction or under construction over the next couple of years, to the tune of over 10,000 megawatts between solar and wind. And as of now, already, we have 2,100 megawatts of solar in operation throughout the country. And I will say, too, that out of that 2,100 megawatts, we do have two operating facilities in the state of Nevada already, those being a project called Silver State South, which we ended up purchasing from a company called First Solar, which is outside of Prim, Nevada, and another 20-megawatt facility that we did ourselves in North Las Vegas that's operating as well right now. So with that, we'll go into some of the information about the project. Won't spend maybe a whole lot of time on this because I think Kelly, don't want to repeat a lot of stuff that Kelly already has provided. But here's a map and just a little overview map up in the top corner of where the project is and context to Reno and Wadsworth. Project highlights, you know, 200 megawatts of photovoltaic energy, 200 megawatts of energy storage. That would consist of, you know, batteries, something like a lithium-ion battery is what we would most likely be looking at here. That allows you to shift your power output from outside of hours where the sun's generating the electricity and also do a lot of, batteries are a very flexible thing to be able to use. So it's starting to become very cost-competitive, and I think we see the market for the energy storage growing quite a bit. So down there is a picture of one of our existing energy storage facilities. That one being in Conex boxes, which is one potential, how we would do it, either be in boxes like that or in a building that would house all the batteries. So a lot of times we get this question, you know, why? Why here? Why not somewhere else? And so we've come up with this little drawing here, the three-legged stool of solar development here. So we really need the land, you know, that, we need that to build the project. In this case, we had a landowner that was willing to sell us the land we needed for the project. It's disturbed with a lot of previous mining activities and was, you know, we felt like after doing some analysis, minimal impacts to environmental on that front. So the resource, what we call, it's really, how good of a solar resource is it? How much, it really drives how much energy a plant, whether you build it, if it's a 200-megawatt facility, you could build it in Canada or you could build it in, you know, Northern Nevada. And so the same plant may generate different amounts of megawatt-hours. So, you know, that's another thing we're always looking for. Then transmission is how do you actually deliver that power into the market? So you're always looking for something that has either direct access or is in close proximity to existing transmission or transmission that's going to be built in the future. Oh, here we go. It was a fancy extra bull's here. I didn't see. So yeah, favorable topography, obviously, too, when you're talking about solar. Unlike, you know, residential and other types of development, we can't afford the costs associated with going in and taking a hilly property and making it one big superpad here. So we need to start with a relatively flat site to begin with. Also, we call the net capacity factor is our metric of how good the solar resource is. So not only do we not want to build transmission lines because of visual impacts, but they're also very costly to build. So these are the things that made this site attractive compared to other options out there. This is just an excellent solar resource, especially when you're looking at Northern Nevada. We have the existing 345 KV lines running through the property owned by NV Energy. We've got good access to the project site off of Highway 447. It's got favorable topography, and as I mentioned, it was disturbed previously with mining activities. And also, I think a unique thing about this location is its proximity to the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center and the Reno Technology Park. As I'm sure you guys are familiar, there's a lot of growth out there. Those guys that are the tenants there use a whole lot of electricity. And on top of that, they, I would say, the majority of those all have renewable goals that are targeting 100% renewables with their energy consumption. So good fit for that. I think, as the crow flies, I think we're looking at about 10 miles from the Tesla Giga factory to this project location. So as far as benefits to the community, the local economy would receive direct, indirect, and induced benefits during the construction and operation of the project. With the equipment and stuff that we're buying, there's going to be county and state sales and use taxes that are generated. During the peak of construction, we're looking at about 500 construction workers onsite. Because of all the labor force that'll be in town during the construction, there'll be an increase in purchases of local goods and services, as well as facility payroll. And then something I think is pretty unique as well is, right now, I think we are the developers of the largest solar and energy storage project in the country being proposed in Arizona, and that's a 100-megawatt solar project with 30 megawatts of energy storage. So at 200 megawatts of solar and up to 200 megawatts of energy storage, this would then become the largest solar and energy storage project in the country. So next, we'll talk about community and agency outreach. We've been working on this project for many years and have really been trying to engage with the local community and people that are, and stakeholders. So as a whole, our company policy is to have agency and community outreach early and often. This is just a list of some of the activity that we've had, meeting with different agencies and reaching out to the community. You know, over 25 meetings with stakeholders to date, including different departments at the county. And, you know, I think we try and take, be considerate and try to take stakeholders' input into consideration when we're going through the development process. So in closing, we feel the project meets the county requirements for approval. We feel that the community and agency response to the project as a whole have been positive. And we really appreciate the commission allowing us the opportunity to present our project, and thank you for your time. And also want to share with you, we've had a great experience working with staff here. So a big thank you to Kelly and the rest of staff for all their hard work. And there's an extra "e" on there here, but we feel like some of this may have been going into some uncharted territory where we're kind of having to figure out solutions to problems along the way. And we feel that staff has been very, taken a very rational approach to trying to work with us and coming up with a reasonable solution. So we're here. I'm the kind of generalist here, but if we want to get into the weeds, I've got my team members here who are ready to get into the weeds if anybody has questions. So thank you very much.
Any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm curious. I noticed one of your community outreach was with the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe.
Yes.
And I saw you had a tribal council meeting there.
Yes.
What did that go like? What was that like? How receptive were they?
Yeah, they've been very supportive. So as part, I think in the list of conditions of approval, it's an odd situation between Highway 447 and our project site. Olling House Road is disturbed, it's there, it's a big, wide road that people drive on all the time. The issue is that segment of road, I think, is a little under 2,000 feet total in length. That is Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe land. And so as part of the process to complete out the development of this project, we're going to need, I think, what they're calling a right-of-entry agreement, which is essentially an easement from the tribe in order to use that segment of Olling House Road. So we've been in there talking with the tribe. First off, I mean, we didn't want them to be blindsided by this, so we felt like it was important, them being the neighbors. I mean, some of the parcels touched the reservation property, so we didn't want to have them hear about the project and have it come out of left field. So we wanted to be upfront with them, let them know what we were up to, and also work with them on this issue we have with project access. So that is an update, is we are in the works of doing that right now. They gave us a proposal to have some consultants do some work on taking us through the process to have that easement granted to us, and we're in the process of doing that now. So overall, they're supportive of doing that, and we are in the, you know, we are going through that process that involves the BIA, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, to help grant that easement for access. Sure.
Any other questions from the applicant? Okay.
Chairman, I'm Julie.
Oh, Sarah.
Yes, hi. I do have a question, and maybe this might be more for staff because I am looking at Exhibit A, and with the question regarding tribal involvement, I'm looking at Item B, where should any prehistoric or historic remains, artifacts be discovered? Since this is on, partially on tribal land, is, should there not be an agreement with the tribe if artifacts are found?
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question, and that is a standard requirement that we have on projects of this type in terms of making sure that we're notified and appropriate agencies are notified. And I'm looking over at our planning manager, Trevor Lloyd, right now to see if he might have some additional insight on that question.
Yes. I'm aware this is not on tribal land. It is certain or close to tribal land. This is a standard condition, as Ms. Mullen indicated. And really, the purpose of this is to alert the applicants that they are, it is their responsibility to work with the state Historic Preservation Office. And if there are, in fact, any artifacts that are found, they are to inventory and to certainly work with SHIP-O in that regard.
Thank you for that, Mr. Lloyd. I guess I am more specifically addressing that even though the project itself is not on tribal land, historically, there was tribal passage to this area. So some of, in the event that artifacts may be fined, they may also be tribally significant. So that is why I'm asking the question.
And Commissioner, the applicant has indicated that they're happy to address that question as well. So if that's fine, I'll pass it over to the applicant.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Hi, Commissioner. Thank you for the question. In regards to, I should have, I guess, expanded on our tribal outreach. We've conducted cultural surveys on the project site and shared those results with the tribe already. And so they have not identified any areas of concern or any issues related to the cultural significance of anything we came across on the project site.
Okay, thank you very much. That eases my mind significantly. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other questions from the commission? Okay. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Seeing there's no public comment, no more, we've done the commission questions, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just want to make sure that you all received the addendum that was sent out by Ms. Mullen.
Yes.
Dated February 5th with the additional conditions.
Okay. Do we need to recognize that, that everybody's received the addendum? Okay. All right. It's there. Any discussion from the commission?
No, I've received the addendum, and I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Well, finding no discussion, I'd like to call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I want to make a motion. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission provisionally approved, with conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, special use permit number WSUP 17-0021 and administrative permit case number WADMIN17-0010 for Dodge Flat Solar LLC, having made all findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Sections 110.810.30 and 110.808.25. And the additional two required findings in accordance with Section 110.324.30. This approval is subject to the project being found in conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. This includes revised conditions as provided in the staff report addendum.
Any discussion on the motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Agenda item HC. Could I ask Mr. Lloyd to give us a brief description?
Certainly. Abandonment case number WAB 17-0006, Shombach, for possible action hearing and discussion to approve the abandonment of a 40-foot-wide roadway and public utility easement along the eastern property line of a privately-owned parcel next to the Mount Rose Highway. The easement was created by a government patent. And again, Ms. Kelly Mullen.
Kelly, you're lucky tonight, huh?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. For the record, Kelly Mullen with Washoe County. This property is located at 16220 Mount Rose Highway. It's just south of the highway between Caswell and Thompson Lanes, and it is about a half-mile east of Bordeaux Drive, that entrance to Montreux. The property is zoned low-density suburban and is one acre in size. The property contains two 40-foot-wide government-patent easements along the western and the eastern property lines. And the request is seeking to specifically abandon the easement along the eastern property line that's shown on the screen with the yellow hatchmark. And the other easement along the western property line, it's currently developed and that would remain untouched. This is a simplified version of that same site plan. Again, that area proposed to be abandoned is on the right in yellow hatching. And I'd also like to point out the red dashed lines on the graphic. Those are the existing leach lines for the septic system. And you can see how they encroach into that access easement that is proposed to be abandoned. The applicant is seeking to abandon that easement. It's an unused patent easement, and the reason for that is because health district standards will not allow for any further development on the property until the septic system is brought into conformance. And in this case, essentially, it means that those leach lines cannot be located within an access easement. And that is what has led to this particular request. This is a portion of the assessor's map for the general area. It's hard to see colors on the screen here, but green are the property lines. The dashed lines represent patent easements in the area. And you can see that patent easements are very common around this property, and the applicant is seeking to abandon that, the small portion in yellow that you see on the screen. This is an aerial photo of the property. The subject parcel is outlined in blue. The undeveloped parcel to the west, that's federally-owned land, and it has two existing possible access points, the first being off of Rose Rock Lane from the east, and the second being from Mount Rose Highway to the north. And then the developed properties that you see to the south and east of the subject site, those all have alternative means of access that has already been developed. And that patent easement that's along the western portion of the property line, again, that's already developed, and that will remain as-is. So next, I'm going to show you some of the photos from the site. This particular one is a panoramic view that's looking south and west from Mount Rose Highway. It's standing at the northeast corner of the property. That red line indicates the proximate location of the eastern property line. And as you can see, the area that's proposed for abandonment, it's not developed as an access, and it generally functions as the applicant's backyard. This is a closer view, similar shot, taken from the northeast portion of the property off of Mount Rose Highway there. Again, that red line indicates the proximate location of the property line. And again, you can see that it's essentially disfunctioning as backyard. This shot is also taken from Mount Rose Highway. However, now we're on the western side of the property, that is, that developed access easement that will remain. And the roadway that you see here, that's what provides access to the property directly to the south. So the request was provided for review to the agencies on the screen. We did receive conditions of approval from three agencies. Notice was provided for the proposed abandonment to four adjacent and nearby property owners. Legal notice was also... Legal notice was also published in the Reno Gazette Journal on January 23rd, and no comments have been received from the public for this request. So state law specifically allows for the Planning Commission to abandon government patent easements when they are no longer needed for a public purpose. And in the analysis of this specific proposal, it was determined that no outside properties would be negatively affected by the proposed abandonment. All adjacent properties already have established means of alternative access. Staff does believe that the proposal is in compliance with the findings that are shown on the screen. We are recommending approval of the request with conditions. And if you agree with that recommendation, a possible motion is displayed for you on the screen. Happy to answer any questions. And the applicant, Mr. Shamback, is also here as well. Thank you.
Any questions from the Commission? Do we have an application presentation? Okay. Do we have any public comment?
I do have a comment card from the applicant. He's indicated that he doesn't want to speak.
Any further questions from the Commission or the staff or the applicant? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Then I'm going to call for a motion. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved, with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, abandonment case number WAB 17-0006 for Harold Shamback, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.806.20 and the additional finding required by IRS for government patent easements.
Mr. Chair, I second.
Motion by Mr. Lawson. Second by Commissioner Haran or Doncheck. Either way, or both. Okay, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
None opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to...
Kelly gets to retire.
Pardon?
Kelly gets to retire.
Yeah.
Kelly gets to retire.
She's running. Agenda item 8D. Mr. Lloyd, could we have a brief description of Agenda item 8D?
Certainly. This is Development Code Amendment, case number WDCA 17-0007. This is a request for setback from easement for possible action, hearing, and discussion. It's a three-part request. The first part, A, to initiate an amendment to Washoe County Code Chapter 110 within Article 406 Building Placement Standards to amend Section 110.406.05 General and for other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. The proposed amendment would require all yard setbacks to be measured from the property line with two exceptions. One, when an access easement or right-of-way greater than 20 feet in width traverses the property, in which case the setback would be measured from the edge of the easement closest to the proposed structure. Or two, when a county-maintained road located outside a recorded easement or right-of-way traverses the property, regardless of width, in which case the setback would be measured from the edge of the road. Now, the second part, B, if the proposed amendment is initiated, to conduct a public hearing to deny or recommend approval of the proposed amendment. And C, if approved, if approval is recommended, to authorize the chair to sign a resolution to that effect. Here for the presentation is Case Planner Eva Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Let's see. I'm going to open the public hearing. We have a staff presentation, Eva?
Yes.
Eva Kraus.
This is basically a change to where we measure a setback from when an easement is 20 feet wide, and also when there is a county, or if there is a county road that's not in an easement. So currently, if an easement's 20 feet wide or more, we measure the easement from the edge of the setback. What, I mean, sorry, from the edge of the easement. What we want to do is say, if the easement's more than 20 feet wide, we'll measure from that easement. Basically, what's so special about a 20-foot easement? Usually, these are normally used, these easements are created as part of a parcel map or an access to private lots. Their 20 feet is a minimum lot size required by, I mean, I'm sorry, the minimum width of an access easement to a private property required by the fire department. They're not intended to become public streets. And actually, this is how the code used to read until 2006, where I was working on a code amendment, and I actually accidentally changed it. And it has caused problems since then, so we're trying to change it back. Right now, any road that's more than 20 feet wide, those have potentials to become public streets, so we want to maintain the setbacks from those. So here's the issue. If you're on one of these little lots, they're third-acre lots out, you know, in an MDS subdivision, you have a 20-foot easement, now the property, and this is an actual, how this actually is laid out, there's a 20-foot access easement. The property on the north now has to set back 20 feet from that easement line, using up 40 feet of its front yard. The property to the south, since the easement's all on the other guy's property, only has to set back 20 feet from the property line. So it's not equally shared by property owners. And there's, like I said, right now, you have between the 20-foot setback, 20-foot easement, and a 20-foot setback, you have 60 feet wide strip of land. So that's quite a bit of access area for, you know, the question was, can the fire department get there? Of course they can. That's why they have that 20-foot requirement. So what the proposal is, is to change it. If you have a 20-foot access easement, you will only have the setback from the property line, so the easement would be incorporated into the front yard setback. So we still have 40 feet clear on either side of that, well, between the two easements, or between the easement and the front yard setbacks. So you're not going to impede the fire department getting to those properties. And it really has no impact on the county, or the fire department, or anybody needing to use that. So we're just trying to change it back to that one. The second part of the issue is county-maintained roads, only county-maintained roads that are not in an easement or a setback. There's not a lot of them, but there are some out there. And the county has, you know, we got the responsibility for plowing and maintaining these roads, and there's no required setback right now from those roads. It's, like I said, it's not normal, but there are some places where there's been unrecorded subdivisions, so there's no easement or even a right-of-way. But there's a road there. And so we are trying to identify those and say, if you have one of those roads going through your property, you still have to set back from the road. This is an example where the road right-of-way, shown in blue, the edge of the road pavement is, well, actually, yeah, this one actually has a road right-of-way, but the road's not in that right-of-way. The edge of the pavement is that orange line to the north. In this case, you'd still have to set back from the edge of the road, not from the right-of-way. So those are the two changes I'm trying to make to this code. And it's a public safety issue on this, in this case, and it provides separation between the road and any structures. So there is a motion to initiate. These are both in your staff report. And then a motion to approve the amendment. If you have any questions, I'm happy to...
Any questions for Eva?
Reflect it back on any of those slides, or...
No? Well, she's the applicant here, so the county's the applicant. Is there any public comment?
There is. Dave Snellgrove.
For the record, Dave Snellgrove, I'm the Planning and Right-of-Way Manager at CFA. And it's before you a few months ago with a project, we actually had some impact from this. We delayed one meeting just to try and measure what it was, and it was that front yard setback requirement off a 20-foot or greater easement. This would have helped rectify it if it was, well, it was 20 feet.
How was it written?
20 feet or more. And now it's more than 20 feet. We're required, a 20-foot wide easement is a standard requirement for fire access. A lot of public access will require 20-foot. And the example that Eva put up, that's one permutation of how it could come about. There's a lot of different things. They become very impactful when you have to apply the front yard easement or front yard setback off of that 20-foot required easement. It comes very consumptive of land. That's what we were reading, why we took a continuance the one night. So I'm appreciative that staff is trying to address this, and I'm in support.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
No further public comment.
No further public comment. Any discussion from the Commission? I'm calling back to the Commission. Well, I guess I'll call for a motion.
I have to close.
Oh, close the public hearing.
Now I'll talk.
Oh, wait a minute. It's a little out of order, but has anybody got any ethics or expertise? Come on, fess up, you guys. All right. All right. Call for a motion.
Can I speak?
Oh, there is discussion. By all means, Mr. Haran.
Well, I just want to, I just want to comment that it's... I can turn my mic on, there it is. That I'm very pleased when common sense tries to prevail.
I wholeheartedly agree. Now, do we have a motion? Commissioner Doncheck.
Initiation. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission initiate the amendment to Washoe County Code Chapter 110 within Article 406 Building Placement Standards as described in the staff report for WDCA 17-0007. Amendment. Do we vote on them separately, or do we do them in conjunction?
You can do it either way. I would probably just say do them both as one.
Conjunction, okay. Then I'll continue. Amendment. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission recommend approval of WDCA 17-0007 to amend the Washoe County Code 110 within Article 406 Building Placement Standards as described in the staff report for this matter. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the resolution contained in Exhibit A on behalf of the Planning Commission and to direct staff to present a report of this Commission's recommendation to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners within 60 days of today's date. This recommendation for approval is based on all the following four standard, following four findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.818.15.
Very good, Commissioner Doncheck. Do we have a second? I second it. Very good. Mr. Bruce seconds. I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
It passes unanimously. Okay, moving right along. Call for Agenda item 8E. Mr. Lloyd, could you give us a brief presentation?
This is Development Code Amendment, case number WDCA 17-0010, for possible action, hearing, and discussion to initiate an amendment to Washoe County Code Chapter 110 and Article 306 Accessory Uses and Structures, to amend Section 110.306.10 Detached Accessory Structures, to define how the height of an accessory structure is measured, both when the structure is located within the required yard or side yard setback, and when it is located outside of the applicable setbacks, and for all other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. If the proposed amendment is initiated, to conduct a public hearing to deny or recommend approval of the proposed amendment, and if approved, approval is recommended, to authorize the chair to sign a resolution to that effect. Once again, Eva Kraus with Planning and Building.
Do we have any disclosures? Ethics or expertise? Okay. Eva?
Thank you. For the record, Eva Kraus, Planner, Washoe County, Planning and Building. This is to address, started out to be addressing just accessory structures built in the side and rear yard setbacks. We also then got into it, and after some public comments, we decided we had to also clarify what happens if it's not built in a setback. Right now, we are not changing what is allowed. Code doesn't change it. There is, we do allow structures up to 12 feet tall to be located in a side or rear yard setback within five feet of the property line. And then accessories, any accessory structures more than 12 feet tall cannot be built in the setback. Same. Okay. This only applies to accessory structures. Can't build a house in the setback even if it's under 12 feet tall. The one thing I wanted to point out is the height of a building is measured to the average height or midpoint of the highest roof. That's how the code does it now, so that's how I'm being consistent for both the accessory structures. So the issue is how our code says you can measure the height of a building. Right now, it says if a building's built on a slope, or the ground level's not even all the way across, you can go out five feet from the side of the building, measure from the highest point. So what do we get? We get an accessory structure. Let's see, my little fly-in's there. Oh, there's your rear yard setback. Here's where they're measuring the accessory structure height from, that little retaining wall, or hillside, or whatever. So here you are, five feet from the neighbor's property line, and your building's 20 feet tall. This is what we're trying to prevent. So this is the language that's in your staff report. You'll say, the height of an accessory structure located within the required rear or side yard setback is measured from the lowest finished grade of the structure to the average height of the gable or pitched roof. Then it also states, the height of an accessory structure located outside of all required setbacks shall be measured in accordance with the building height provision of 902. That was that first illustration I showed you of how building heights are measured. So here is what we're going to get if this is approved. Structures built in the setback. Let's go here. There's your setback. You're going to measure from the lowest grade to the mid-peak. It's 12 feet. That's it. That's all you get when you're in that setback. If you're outside the setback, you make your 20-foot, or 30-foot, or whatever your setback is, you can go up to 35 feet, just like any other building in the residential area. So that's the intent of this amendment. And I do have the motion to initiate and to amend the code in your staff report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does the Commission have any questions for Eva?
No.
Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Seeing there's no public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. Any discussion?
Again, common sense.
Any further discussion? I second that motion. Then I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, initiation. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission initiate the amendment to Washoe County Code Chapter 110 within Article 306 Accessory Uses and Structures as described in the staff report for WDCA 17-0010. Amendment. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission recommend approval of WDCA 17-0010 to amend Washoe County Code Chapter 110 within Article 306 Accessories and Structures as described in the staff report for this matter. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the resolution contained in Attachment A on behalf of the Planning Commission and to direct staff to present a report of this Commission's recommendation to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners within 60 days of today's date. This recommendation for approval is based on all the following four findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.88... with Washoe County Code, Section 110, eight eighteen dot fifteen E.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heran. Now I'll call for, is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, here we go. Item 8F. Mr. Lloyd, would you give us a brief description of the item?
This is Regulatory Zone Amendment, Case Number WRZA seventeen dash zero 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 six for Valley Vista, for possible action, hearing and discussion by the Washoe County Planning Commission to amend the Sun Valley Regulatory Zone map, changing the regulatory zone from medium-density suburban, MDS, three units per acre, to high-density suburban, HDS, seven units per acre, on a fifteen-point-three-three acre parcel located at 550 East Fourth Avenue at the southwest corner of East Fourth Avenue and Loop and Drive in Sun Valley. And here from Planning and Building is Julie Olander.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Are there any disclosures? Ethics or expertise?
I have a disclosure that I have a neighbor who owns a piece of property not far from there, and he mentioned it and did not express an opinion one way or the other, but did express a concern about traffic. Do I need to disclose anymore?
I have a couple of questions just to follow up on that.
Sure.
This is not your property, though? You don't have any monetary interest?
I have no monetary interest whatsoever. It's my next-door neighbor that owns the property. It's a rental property.
And did you make any commitments to your neighbor about how you would vote on this item?
No.
No, I think that disclosure is fine, and I don't see this as a situation where you need to recuse yourself.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Julie?
Good evening, Commissioners. Julie Olander with Building and Planning. I do want to make one correction on the case description. I said it was in the wrong district. It is in District Five, and it's Commissioner Herman's district, not Commissioner Jung's district. So before us, we have a Zone Amendment, Regulatory Zone Amendment for Valley Vista. This property is located on 55 East Fourth Avenue on the southeast corner of Fourth and Loop and Drive. Here is a site, a view of the site. The request is to change the zoning from medium-density, three units per acre, to high-density, seven units per acre on a fifteen-point-three-acre property. In 2011, a gated manufactured home park was approved with seventy-five units with private streets and a common area at this same, at this location, and that application is still current and valid. They could build the manufactured home park at that location if they, if the property owner chose to. HDS, changing it to the high-density suburban, will allow for the same density that was approved in 2011 for the seventy-five units. However, it will provide for the lots to be for sale, so the property will be divided in such a way that it will create parcels, and they will have lots instead of spaces. You would have spaces with the manufactured home, and it would be still one parcel. With the HDS, the applicant's desire is to create individual lots with manufactured homes on them. The northwest corner of this property is shown in this overhead, that it is in the Hundred Year Flood Plain, just a small portion. The parcels to the northwest and east are zoned MDS, and the parcel to the south is zoned OS, open space. Property is currently vacant and fairly flat. Here is an example of what the zoning will change currently. It shows MDS with the subject property and then with the HDS. The manufactured home park, as I said, was approved with the seventy-five manufactured homes at this location. The site is in the Sun Valley Suburban Character Management Area, which is designated as the growth area for the Sun Valley Area Plan. The Sun Valley Area Plan does promote a variety of housing densities, and the master plan housing element encourages zoning flexibility, higher-density development, more affordable housing, and homeownership. This proposed change was evaluated against the master plan and the Sun Valley Area Plan, and that's in your staff report on pages eleven through twelve. Staff does believe the proposed residential development supports and is consistent with all plans and policy of the master plan and the Sun Valley Area Plan. The Sun Valley Area, the Sun Valley General Improvement District, the GID, will provide the water and sewer for this development. Schools in the areas are the Sun Valley Elementary School, Sparks Middle School, and Hug High School. A new middle school is under construction, and there is a possibility for a new high school in the area. The applicant did review traffic and access and found that the traffic estimates fell below the eighty-peak hour rate, and it didn't prop a traffic study. This is from the previous approval from 2011. However, they have stated that this is still the status of the property. They had Paul Saleggi review the traffic study again, and he was in agreement with the previous study, is my understanding. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on Monday night, the fifth, and at the First Baptist Church, which is right across the street from the site. And then there was a cab meeting last night, held at the Sun Valley Neighborhood Center. Both meetings were well-attended, and the cab voted four to one to provide comments and not a recommendation. Some of the comments included that there were concerns about traffic, flooding, fire safety, safety for children, schoolchildren, lack of sidewalks in the area, street lighting, crime, outdoor storage, ditches, noise, site access, more development, and more overcrowding in the area. There were also comments in support, which include provide more affordable housing, the property would have an HOA to address the property maintenance issues, the project would improve the site and bring more homeownership into the area. Over seven hundred, the noticing requirement is to notice seven hundred and fifty feet from the property. Two hundred and twenty-one different property owners were noticed, and as I stated, the cab meeting was held, and the meetings were all noticed per Article 821. The reviewing agencies included Washoe County's Engineering and Capital Projects Department, Traffic, Washoe County Health District, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, Regional Transportation, Sun Valley General Improvement District, and there were no recommendations for denial. Because this is a zone change, there is no opportunity to provide conditions. It's either an approve or deny application. Staff was able to make the six findings, and those are detailed in your staff report. I don't, maybe it is on page thirteen and fourteen. I think it's ten eleven. I apologize if I have the wrong numbers there. Staff, the first finding is being consistent with the master plan, and as I explained, we were not, I was not able to find any conflicts with the master plan. The second requirement is compatible land use. This is a proposed residential zoning change that is compatible with the agents, the adjacent zoning and the, then the adjacent properties that are zoned MDS residential, and there was no conflict to the public, health, safety, or welfare. Finding number three is respond to changes and more desirable use. Again, this is supporting the Sun Valley Suburban Character Management Area, which promotes growth for the Sun Valley and is also supported by the master plan housing element policies. Number four is available for facilities. As I stated earlier, Sun Valley General Improvement District is to provide the water and sewer, and the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection will provide the fire protection in the area. Number five is no adverse effects, and this is concerning policies, and I put this, added this, I put a little addition in there. This is only concerning the policies in action, policy and action programs of the Washoe County Master Plan. And again, this, this zone change is supported by the master plan, as I stated in my staff report and in the presentation this evening. Number six is desired pattern of growth. The proposed amendment will further implement the desired growth of that area, which is designated as an area for residential densities. I have provided a motion, and I am available for questions.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions?
Quick question. Julie?
I'm coming back.
Oh, you're coming back. Sorry, I thought you were running away.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't state. Anyway, yes.
The density then is moving from, what, seventy-five units to a hundred and five, a hundred and three, a hundred and five, then? Is it going seven per acre versus the seventy-five it was approved before?
Right. Approved before was, HDS was three units per acre. Now with the mobile, the manufactured home park, there, it's, it's a little bit different how they provide the densities there, because it's a park. It's not, you don't have, the setbacks aren't the same, we don't have the same density requirements. Because of that, the manufactured home is, park was able to put the seventy-five units in there without having the zone change. A manufactured home park is allowed in MDS, so it's a permitted use with a special use permit, and that's what was brought before the Board of Adjustments in 2011.
So how many units?
In 2011, seventy-five, and then today, it's seventy-five, so.
So the same amount?
It's the same amount. There's no change in the units, and after the zone change is approved, the applicant is, will move forward with a tentative map, and then that tentative map will show the layout of those lots, and they, they've indicated they're using the exact same layout that they had proposed in 2011.
Thank you.
Julie, so, as I read through this, I, I guess that really the only change than what was approved in 2011 is that they're going to actually sell these parcels so that the individuals have ownership rather than leasing a parcel, so they'd be able to gain
Yes.
The ability to finance and things like that.
Yes, and I think I stated in my staff report some information the applicant had provided about the reasoning behind the advantages for the lots to be for sale. It's, the advantages to the homeowner is significant. They can get conventional mortgage on the property versus if it's just a manufactured home, they're trying to get a loan on it, seen as personal property, and those loans are harder to get, and the interest rate's significantly higher.
Yeah. Good concept. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. If we change this, even though the developer has represented that it's going to stay seventy-five, is there anything that keeps him from, the developer from coming back and saying, "No, I made it a hundred"?
So the other caveat to all of this is the, the regional plan, Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, only allows five units per acre in the unincorporated area of Washoe County. So we're limited already. So even though our zoning allows the seven units, we're prohibited from having the seven units, so we can only have no more than five, and the applicants indicated that they're basically going to have four point eighty, four point eight-nine units per acre, so it's under that five.
That, that's fine. I just wanted to, representation and the only information I had was the seventy-five units, and, but seven times fifteen is a hundred and five. That was my question. That's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, and just for clarification, Ms. Olander was correct. The regional plan limits Washoe, limits densities in Washoe County for single-family residential to five dwelling units per acre. However, there are, there is a caveat that if, if, if there's a request for multifamily or attached units, they can't exceed that, that number. If there's a show of housing affordability as well as transit, they have to meet those, those requirements.
Thank you from Mr. Lloyd for that extra explanation.
Any other questions? Or Julie? Do we have an applicant presentation?
Good evening. Darren Prue, I'm the applicant. I also was back in 2011 when the project was originally approved. Just, just a quick little background, I'm a mortgage broker, I'm in the mortgage business, and a few years ago, I was appointed to be on the Mortgage Advisory Council, where we work with the Mortgage Commissioner. It was through that experience that I was exposed to different kinds of financing options. One of those is what's called a chattel mortgage, and a chattel mortgage is typically personal property. So, my presentation tonight, and I'll make it very quick, Julie did a fantastic job. I will explain why this is, this little change dramatically benefits the people that will live in the community. If I talk too fast, say, "Slow down, Darren." You know where we're at, we're in Sun Valley, Sun Valley Boulevard, Fourth Street, or, excuse me, Fourth Avenue, this is the subject property. Here it is here. The LDS church is here, and the current approval is for this project, it's seventy-five units. Currently approved, it's a manufactured mobile home park, seventy-five units, gated community special, special use permit, approved in 2011, still active today. With this zone amendment, we're still seventy-five units, but they're subdivided parcels. It's called a common open space development, gated community, acres of open space. We have a little over a half-mile of walking trails, I'm proud about that, community garden, recreation areas, onsite storage. They look just a little bit different, they were handled by different engineers. CFA now is handling things for us, and Mr. Snellgrove will have a chance to talk in just a moment, but seventy-five units before, seventy-five units after. The layout is almost identical. I have it in there twice, it must have been worth repeating. Why is this important? It's currently approved. This is really the crux of why I've gone through this process. When I learned about chattel mortgages, I came back to my engineer and said, "Hey, I want to change this from how it's currently set up, with personal property as the home and real property as the land. If we just make a change where those lots are subdivided, they can be both real property." When they're both real property, I'm jumping ahead of myself. Let me just follow my slides. Soon as we're done here, we're going to apply for a tentative map. T tentative map will allow us to get subdivided parcels. With subdivided parcels, we'll have individual assessors' parcel numbers. Once you have individual assessors' parcel numbers, allows for individual ownership. Currently, I have a, currently it's one parcel, one assessor's parcel number, seventy-five spaces. Once approved with the zone amendment and the tentative map, it'll still be seventy-five, but there will be seventy-five different assessor parcel numbers. Once you have those parcel numbers, land and home are both real property. Once they're both real property, you can get FHA/VA financing. FHA/VA and financing is going to save the homeowners six to seven hundred bucks a month. You save six, seven hundred bucks, it makes a whole lot more affordable. Why the savings? Under the existing model, they're chattel loans, it's a personal property loan. We're against that. There's really two, this is the big issue. There's two providers of it, really. Vanderbilt and Twenty-First Mortgage. They're both owned by the same guy. No, I don't have any problem with Warren Buffett, I write him a check every month through Envy Energy, but those are the two companies that provide chattel mortgages in the manufactured home business. Well, under our proposed model, this little teeny change, FHA Homes, these are all the local banks that provide home mortgages. These are just local banks. These are local credit unions. These are local mortgage companies, and only some of them. These are national companies, you can get a mortgage at Costco. It changes the dynamics. With the chattel loan, that's the one in red on the left, they require up to twenty percent, sometimes more, down payment. They have a shorter term, twenty years instead of thirty, and they have a much higher interest rate, probably more than double of what someone can get in an FHA/VA today. If you support this, it supports affordable housing. We know we have a housing crunch, I don't need to go through all the news articles, but I will, because they help me make my argument. There's a real problem with affordable housing. Why this little change can address this. That's what the project looks like. I think that's my last slide. I'll be available for any questions, but I'm going to turn things to Mr. Snellgrove, and I'm going to sit right here.
Thank you for the record, Dave Snellgrove, I'm the.
Thank you for the record, Dave Snellgrove. I'm the planning and right-of-way manager with CFA. Wanted to go over some of the items relative to the legal findings. Julie did a great job in her presentation. I'll try and elaborate on some of the areas where some of the confusion came up relative to some of the densities and so on to make sure that that's clear. And I would definitely be available if you have any questions after I've tried to explain. As Darren mentioned, this was previously approved, 2011, seventy-five unit mobile home park. We've had some recent changes in the area, you know, highlighted in the newspaper, but, you know, ongoing. We've got a significant shortage in affordable housing. I heard, I haven't heard other jurisdictions, but I hit, did hear the city of Sparks. I think they were seven thousand units short on their own in affordable housing. Sorry, I lost the battery. With that, the prices, because there's a lack of demand generally of housing, the prices continue to go up, which make affordable housing that much less affordable. You've got, we've got a big dilemma here. The change to the, from the mobile home park over to the single-family lots, Darren came to me with the idea, thinking, you know, it's fairly commonsensical. Can we go ahead and take this, same spaces and just draw parcel lines around them? I knew we'd have to go through the tentative map. That's a state rule. I didn't know that we were going to have to go through the hoop and hurdle of regulatory zone amendment. We met with staff and found out, oh, man, we've got a little bit more ahead of us than, than just taking it and changing it and going with a, with a tentative map. This, this area, this is Table 110406.05.1. This is from the county's code in Article 406, and it identifies kind of what, what we're looking at. Squared in red, the MDS, that's the medium-density suburban, it says three dwelling units per acre. It says three H. There's an H behind that. That H is contained at the bottom in the red rectangle, and it says dwelling units per acre for single-family detached. That would be three. Five dwelling units per acre for both single-family attached and manufactured home parks within designation. That's how it got approved before, but it doesn't allow you in MDS to just take that and, and divide it. So what we'd have to do is go to the next zoning designation up that's allowed within the Sun Valley Character Management Area, which is HDS. There is an MDS four, but that's not used in too many areas. The next zoning designation up is the HDS, which allows for seven dwelling units per acre. I can tell you, it is not the intent of Mr. Prue to go with anything different than what we're working on. We've put a lot of work into a tentative map to try and get the mapping up to the level that's necessary to submit that tentative map. It would be an entire waste of money on his part. We do plan to submit that by February fifteenth. It was mentioned by Mr. Lloyd and also by, by Ms. Olander that the regional plan does limit the unincorporated areas in terms of the density. That's another safeguard in terms of the five dwelling units per acre rather than the seven. I know that the zoning designation says seven to the acre. This additionally holds us on a single-family detached, which is what we're proposing to go to. It's a maximum of five dwelling units per acre. We have the suburb, the Character Management Area. We are within the Suburban Character Management Area. This is from the Sun Valley Area Plan. This identifies the different zoning designations that would be allowed in this, in the Suburban Character Management Area for Sun Valley, and each area plan gets, gets different ones written up. But you can see there highlighted in green, both medium-density suburban and high-density suburban are allowed along with other, other zoning designations, and they'd have to be measured on how appropriate and how compatible they are with the, with the adjacent zoning. The Development Studabilities Map for the Sun Valley Area does identify that there's flooding. That was one thing we heard with the neighborhood meeting, which was, actually, I think Ms. Olander had it on the fifth. That was on the first at the Baptist Church, and then we also heard flooding was a big issue again last night at the Citizens Advisory Board. We do have that area. That area had previously been left open where the blue crosses this property, and we're continuing with that, leaving it open. I'd imagine that there will be conditions of approval as we come through the tentative map to make appropriate upgrades and improvements that are necessary there, but that will be a tentative map issue. The Street and Highway System Plan, this is one thing. Traffic was brought up quite a bit. The line that goes east-west there off of the second signal, there's, that blue S is their traffic signal. So the top one is Fifth, Fifth Avenue. The second one down is Fourth Avenue. That golden line that goes east-west is a collector status street, which is identified in the Washoe County Street and Highway Plan, within the Sun Valley Area Plan. So the street that we'd be feeding out to and that we were proposing to feed out to previously with the mobile home park is, has been identified by the county to be a collector status street, and I'm sure that that's with RTC as well, that they recognize it as such. So on the legal findings, consistency with the master plan. Julie went over these. I'll go a little bit more detail on them. Sun Valley Policy 1.3 identifies that the, both these designations, medium-density suburban, which we're going from, also high-density suburban, which we're proposing to go to, are both allowed. Additionally, the Sun Valley 2.7, Sun Valley 10.1, and 12.1, which actually are identical to one another, and then also the land use and transportation element from the, from the Washoe County Master Plan are all supported, addressing sidewalks and paved paths. That'll have to be part of, part of what we're putting along the frontage, along Fourth Avenue. This will ultimately need to connect to community water and sewer. We have been working with Sun Valley GID, as had been worked on in 2011, and we are within the Suburban Character Management Area, and the TMSA, the TMSA is the area that you would have water and sewer. Compatibility with zoning, I mentioned this earlier. There are some zoning designations that are allowed within the Suburban Character Management Area. I'm going to throw out industrial. That wouldn't be appropriate here. It would be identified as a very low compatible use next to medium-density suburban. However, there's a matrix, and this is a synopsis of, of the matrix relative to the two zoning designations that we're talking about, does identify that the two zoning designations were closest to open space and medium-density suburban. With the high-density suburban is highly compatible, though that's out of, out of the master plan information. Legal findings, changed the conditions, more desirable. We've had a lot of changes in the region relative to affordable housing and housing in general. And in the housing element of the Washoe County Master Plan, Goal One specifically identifies a few things, removal of regulatory barriers. This is one of the hurdles that we do need to go through, and we do hope that you are supportive of it. Allow for more flexible zoning. We feel, Sun Valley has a lot of medium-density suburban, but it does allow for other designations going, and that's what we're proposing here. In Policy 1.5, encourage developments at higher densities. And then also Policy 7.4 is to promote home ownership opportunities. Availability of facilities, we have close-spark semi-street connectivity. I talked about the collector status street, Fourth Avenue. That feeds down to Sun Valley Boulevard through a controlled access point, which is the signalized intersection, which feeds down directly on the freeway with, I don't want to say the new on-ramp, but it relatively new for those of us that have been here for a long time. Utilities are adjacent to the site. Parks and schools are roughly a quarter-mile away, walking distance on the streets. RTC bus service is about a quarter-mile away due north on Fifth and Lupin, and there are two churches directly adjacent. One is same side of the street, the other one's on the north side of, of Fourth Avenue. Julie mentioned that no adverse effect really goes to the master plan policies. I think she did a great job covering that. And desired growth pattern, I think she did a great job covering that too, but I will highlight, this is an infill site, infrastructure, utilities, recreation, school, transit, and worship facilities are all in close proximity to this site. We do feel that this project can be very supportive and, and does meet all the findings. Be available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Please, if I may, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lawson.
There was a, you briefly touched on sidewalks on Sun Valley and curb and gutter maybe on Fourth and paved paths. How does that fit with the RTC's investigation on drainage in that corridor?
Well, those two things, there's a couple of things going on. Go back to one that has a map on it. I don't know how far back I have to go. There, that one. If you look up to the northern part of the map, that is, that is Plan North and True North, you have the Mormon Church, which has been constructed with sidewalk curb and gutter, and that controls the drainage running along the street there. If you go out in Sun Valley right now, along most of the streets, there's actually rather deep drainage ditches along the roadway. There were a lot of comments that were brought up about schoolchildren waiting down at Wooden Fourth for the bus stop, that sometimes they'd end up waiting in those drainage culverts. If you go out and look at, look at the improvements that were put along in front of the LDS Church, those improvements would need to be matched with us, which controls the drainage along that stretch. Right now, you have water that'll wash off and go into the, in Drainage R Usab. Quite an impressive video from one of the neighbors who lives down on the cul-de-sac, near the end of the cul-de-sac with the raging river that was going by, and that is from that floodplain area. Right now, we've got water that's going in uncontrolled, and with the curb and gutter and sidewalk, one, you get a safer environment for any pedestrian. Two, you get with the curb and gutter, you get some control of that, of that water coming off. And additionally too, we're work, we are working on the engineering plans for this right now, so trying to work with detention basins and trying to hold some of the water back, which is kind of separate from the curb and gutter and sidewalk issue, but I wanted to bring that up because flooding was a big question that came up, and, and we are leaving that area open, and if the county requires that we provide additional improvements through condition, we'll need to do those with ultimate development of the property, but that is really tentative map question.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ray?
Any other questions?
I have a quick, quick question. You alluded early on about onsite storage. Would you elaborate on that for just a second? What did you mean by that?
Well, there's a little section that's right near the beginning of the subdivision that's next to the church, and it has, I think, fifteen or twenty spots there that would be suitable for. Because it's a private streets, we'll have our own snow removal equipment, but also space for people that may have a, a vehicle to store or something like this.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chair, if I, I know there may be some concerns or questions about the ultimate tentative map, but that will come in at a later date. I just want to remind the commission, we're talking about the regulatory zone amendment specifically tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions? Okay, then I'll call for public comment. Any public comment?
Yes. We have Robert Taylor followed by Margaret Reinhardt.
I'm going to oppose it. I will say this, that I'm going to be looking at all them nice homes out of my kitchen, which I, for thirty-five years have lived there, has been nothing there, and I liked it with nothing there. That's all I have to say. I do oppose it.
Thank you.
All right.
We have Margaret Reinhardt followed by Lawrence Strickland.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Reinhardt. I am a fifty-four-year resident of Sun Valley. I am a past chairwoman of the Sun Valley GID and a former board member for twelve years. I have been on and off of the Sun Valley CAB for more than the past twenty years. I'm currently the chairperson of the Sun Valley Citizens Advisory Board. Most of the comments that, that were made last night were against it, and it was the density and, and the floodplain issues and the fact that, I mean, this idea is not new to you, I'm sure, that once you allow a density change, you've got other developers that want to come in and do more of that. And Sun Valley has traditionally been medium-density with one-third, you know, acre per dwelling, and it's, it's, it's working out well. We have done a lot with Sun Valley to improve it, but we feel that this subdivision is setting it backwards. It's, it's not enhancing the valley at all. We, when he was questioned at, at the cab last night, we, I asked him, "What are the setbacks proposed? Ten feet in the front and ten in the back." These, the people that buy into this, this tiny little lot, ten feet in the back, they cannot erect a shed because I, I'm sure you're aware that you need a five-foot clearance around that shed, a setback from the property line and the building. With only ten feet to work with, even a one-foot square shed wouldn't work without a variance, so there is no room. They can, also, they don't have the square feet to, to have a garage. These homes will not, not, not come with a garage, so they will not only not have garages, but they won't have storage sheds. It, it doesn't conform to the area, and the other two meetings that we held were very heavily attended, and no one was, was, was for it. Some people thought, well, there were a few comments that, well, it would somehow be, be good, affordable. I, I wanted to address that, but now I got ahead of myself. I'm sorry. Where am I with my, oh, dear. Okay. We were told at the cab and at the other meeting that this is a done deal, and the people that were there hadn't, that there was no need for them to come here because that permit for the seventy-five, you know, dwelling mobile home park was identical to this. It's not. It's, it's about seventy-five parcel, you know, numbers more. It's totally different, and I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm, because I see the clock.
Need to finish up your time, is that?
I have to leave, right? Yes, okay.
Finish up. You gotta...
Oh, I thought...
I'll give you a couple seconds.
Please don't do this to the, do this to us. It doesn't conform to, to the surrounding area. It's, it's not a compliment to Sun Valley. We have third-acre mobile homes, and we can put in one shed, two sheds, three sheds. It's, it's wonderful living out there. It has been, I have loved, you know, every moment of living out there, and the people that buy into this are going to be so restricted that they can't, that they're, I don't, I doubt that, you know, a family that can't have a garage or a shed or a back, you know, ten feet isn't...
You're going to have to wrap it up. That's...
Okay. Thank you for your time. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, just to throw this out there, I know it's, I know people have some passionate ideas and opinions about these projects and things like that, but the agenda limits it to three minutes, and the commission needs to hold people to the three minutes, or else the commission is in jeopardy of not following its own agenda, so that's really the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Edelman.
You're welcome.
Well, move it.
Lawrence Strickland followed by Damian McQueen.
Ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. I'm Robert Taylor's brother. My name is Lawrence Strickland, but I was adopted, so I'm still his brother. I'm up here to help him with his property. I've been here off and on since four years ago. I heard about this development, but not, heard that it wasn't going through, so never thought about it until just about a week and a half ago. It was brought to our attention that they're, you know, addressing this issue again. Now they want to change the development to the, the homes, which is all fine. Our biggest problem, and I think the first thing that I'm concerned about, is if you look at the road going up Pearl, and I apologize, I don't have any information here, but if you go up Pearl to Short Avenue and it turns right to the, it turns left to the right is the property that they're developing. What they're showing is their property is going to be pushed right up against the three properties that are above Short Avenue and against their field. My concern is there's no easement. They're not showing any kind of access to the back of those properties, and for thirty-five, forty years, we've had a gate that you could go out if you had to. We have access... We have access to the front of the property, but that's set back behind one property, which is only a private driveway, and then there's a third property. Those three properties, for almost thirty-five years or forty years or so, have shared a common driveway. That's a driveway, not a road where, you know, first responders can get in there. So my biggest concern is, is what their plan is for that road. Are they gonna block off half the road? I understand that they don't want to develop the road because the neighbors further up the road don't want to give up front of their property to develop a road. So all I'm saying is, I don't have the prints, I haven't been able to see them. I'm a retired contractor out of Los Angeles. I would think that there'd be some kind of an easement for fire, first responders, and things like that. And it just looks to me like this little wonderful Alice in Wonderland is being put in the middle of a beautiful field where the density in that whole area is minimum, and it just doesn't belong there. I think of all the places they could have put this, that's the wrong place. And I think it's run the value of the property that's already there down, because obviously now everybody's gonna have to figure out how to get around the problem. Our problem, like I said, is an easement. If you look at that map, we're the second one in between, there's three property, actually four properties. There's one above us that has to be accessed from the next street up. But I think the accessibility for first responders and fire and all of that in itself should be addressed. And then, secondly, I don't, the floodplain, the schools, I've been coming here, I'm from LA, so I'm used to a lot of traffic. I'm just sorry, but I don't believe that Fourth Street is gonna handle the traffic. Just coming out here tonight, it was bumper to bumper coming up Fourth Street, and there's only lights there. There's very few lights in all of Sun Valley. One thing I've noticed since they've developed the streets is that they're coming from Pyramid down Sun, Sun Valley now, and they cut through Sun Valley. A lot of traffic is cutting through those residential's to get over to Spanish Springs and out in that area.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Anyway, gentlemen, that's what I have to say. I'm against it.
Damian McQueen followed by Jisoo Rayou.
Hi, my name's Damian McQueen. I just want to say that I am actually in favor of this. So we have some things in Sun Valley that have frustrated me for a long time. We have a lot of trash, and the area has a very bad reputation of being just not very good, because people want to build sheds as opposed to actual houses with lawns and real property that can be afforded. And I think this, our developers actually addressed a lot of our concerns so far, such as putting in sidewalks, lighting, addressing some of the flooding. I live right down the hill from where the development's at, and that'll address a lot of the flooding issues for me, which is actually a relief. It's also gonna take care of fire, because being in an undeveloped field, with the open weeds like that, we have wildfires that can occur, and that's always been a concern of mine. With the development going in, whether it's gonna go in as a mobile home park or as a higher-quality standard of living for people that is more affordable, I think that don't, not only benefits Sun Valley and improves the reputation of Sun Valley as a whole, but also as Washoe County and Reno and the entire state of Nevada. I just believe that this should be approved and would like strongly urged, since we're looking to build high-quality homes, not sheds.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jisoo Rayou followed by Eric Dietling.
Good evening. I moved down Sun Valley three years ago. We love it, because it's not congested, it's serene, and then we have good neighbors and very good. However, this, this amendment will create problems. If you look at the page nineteen of a staff report, you have a map of Sun Valley. That's all residential area is medium density, and the little, little area in the middle, they want to change it to high density. High density means hundred-five units are loads, are low. So they are going to build seventy-five units. Why they, why don't they build a sixty, forty-five unit as medium density? If you build seventy-five unit, that change will change the whole character of Sun Valley. In the staff report, it says there's no change, it's comparable with the plans. They use word like a comparable, consistent, and such a word, but that's not true. If you look at whole map, if you change a little bit in, inside, that change the character of Sun Valley. And other people talked about adverse effect. There will be significant adverse effect by changing to seventy-five unit. Such as, very, if you look at the map of, map of that plot, it's very com, very crowded. This kind of crowds will invite criminal element. So there was many residents attended all the meetings. They're all against this change. But yesterday, the member, both, both members says, this is already done deal, sounds to me. That was very unfortunate. I wish you, we consider whole project, they can keep forty-six unit.
Thank you. Your time's up. Who do we have next?
Eric Dietling followed by Smithers Marquez.
Hello, my name is Eric Dietling. I'm an owner in Sun Valley. I own two parcels about three blocks north of the proposed development, and I'm in escrow to purchase another one. One of the things I do for a living is I, I purchase properties in Sun Valley and lots in Sun Valley, and I bring in new units, and I convert them to real property and make them FHAVA, conventional USDA-financable. Sun Valley's one of the last places where that can be done and the end product can be affordable. Even as, as it is, my two projects that I have going right now are going, are pushing the limit of what is affordable. One's currently on the market for three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. These properties, this project allows for what the master plan calls for, which is more affordable housing in the area. A little more density makes that possible. Five, five parcels per acre isn't exactly that dense, it's over eight-thousand square feet per parcel. It's beautiful development. Unlike the surrounding development around it, it's got curbs, sidewalks, proper drainage in the form of storm drains, paved roads. I can't imagine why the people surrounding that area wouldn't be thrilled to have this put in, in that area. I know it will enhance the value of the properties that I'm working on right now. I think that based on the number of people that were noticed in that area has required that the people that have showed up to this meeting represent really a minority. The people who didn't come to complain didn't come because they already are fine with it or it doesn't bother them. I'm surprised that the cab member that came to speak tonight addressed that the character of Sun Valley is one-third acre parcels. Within the last year, I sold a one-six acre parcel that was grandfathered in, it had been parceled off prior to changes in the zoning, and I was able to sell that parcel to a fully disabled person who couldn't afford anything else except for a little home on a one-six acre parcel, and she was very happy with it. And I was happy to be able to do that, to provide that service. So I, I think that this is a fantastic project, and it bodes well for Sun Valley that a project like this is approved. That being said, it's kind of sad, there are very few parcels left in Sun Valley that are large enough to accommodate a project. It's really not an issue. There aren't gonna be many more of these in Sun Valley, simply because it's already developed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who do we have next?
Smithers Marquez followed by Mike Hill.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Smithers Marquez, and I work with Julie Cadjew and Associates. Julie has been in the real estate business for over thirty years, and we specialize in manufactured homes. We've experienced the current challenges in obtaining loans on just a manufactured home as personal property versus the ease of obtaining a loan on a manufactured home with real property. This project in Sun Valley is an opportunity for affordable housing, and it's an improvement for the community. Their support to the zoning change will give the buyers more opportunities and possibilities for financing. It is a great part, project, and I think it's a step in the right direction of improving Sun Valley. I understand that there are some people in the community that have concerns, but this project has done its due diligence, and they are meeting all county requirements. Allowing the zoning change would just simply help buyers the ability to purchase their new homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Yes. Mike Hill followed by Suzha Rayou.
Hello there. My name's Mike Hill. I live in Reno, and I have worked in and around Sun Valley off and on for the last twenty-five years and know the area real well. I do believe this is a really great project, and it's a beautiful planned community for Sun Valley. The zoning change really won't have any negative effect whatsoever. On the contrary, it, like many others have said here, it will benefit the project and the community in two major ways. Number one, as we're all aware of, obviously, we have a really bad housing crunch. I think everyone knows about that. And this is gonna provide a desperately needed entry-level homeownership for the residents that live in the Reno Sparks and surrounding areas. It really is allowing for people to own the land versus leasing the land, and it's, it's a no-brainer. It's just, it's a wonderful thing for someone to be able to come in at an entry-level pricing. Not sure what the pricing's gonna be, but it's gonna be a heck of a lot less than the average stick-built house, say, in, in this area. So I just, I'm in support of the project, and I think it's gonna beautify the area, and I'm supportive of the zoning change and respectfully hope that the zoning change is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzha Rayou followed by Sheila Cunningham.
Good evening, Commissioner. Sorry, my English accent. Yeah, yeah. I am not speaking perfect English, because English is my second language. We had a meeting regarding this project. Monday, we, at the church, we spent a long time opposing the project to the developer with an angry, angry voice, and he acknowledged that he had a very hard evening on Monday. Yesterday, again, we met, we spent almost three hours from six o'clock and close, close to nine o'clock. We left a little bit earlier than nine o'clock, but we spent, you know, close to three hours. So today, many people, all this opposing voice, not here, because it's just three days consequently spending, I mean, tie, all the hours tired, and the time-wise and location-wise, they have to, you know, sacrifice their family life with the kids and the family members and dinner and so on. So a lot of people are not here, but some people are supporting him is here. I am very disappointed. You are not listening. You didn't, don't have a chance to listen. All those resident loud voice saying no to this project. Okay, the concern is traffic jam and the safety issue. I heard from the people, kids were hit by the car, not even without this project, as it is. The street has no side, sidewalking and also ditches, ditches. So they said they have car accident. Different papers told, they were hit, kids were hit by the cars and flood. Many people said they spent a lot of money for flood insurance, and those are never fixed. And the fire, the, the fire issue. I saw fire on the hill last year. The smoke comes up, and the fire truck cannot go up. They, I mean, it goes up very slowly. Many car, fire trucks...
Thank you, your time's up right now. Thank you.
Yeah, many trucks, fire trucks there, they cannot go up, and...
Thank you, your time is up.
Okay, my, today, I walked around the neighborhood, and...
Thank you, your time is up.
Yeah.
Please sit down.
It was a hot, okay.
Thank you.
Hello, I think the problem is that apparently you cannot make a...
State, state your name, address, please, and, and speak into the microphone.
Sheila Cunningham, 53, 25 Maderos Drive, which is one house off from the proposed project. I think the problem is that apparently you cannot make a, a medium-density house, you can't, you can't have it, if it's in a medium-density zone, you can't have it be real property. Why not change the rule to where you can do that instead of changing this piece of land into high-density? And last night, the chairperson at the Sun Valley cab, who is here tonight, I forgot her name, I'm sorry, but she, she mentioned that she had seen this happen a hundred times, where one section of the neighborhood gets changed to high-density, and then, then before you know it, the rest of the neighborhood is like that. And I think that's one of the nice things about Sun Valley, is that it's so close to downtown, and yet it's, it's like a small, it's like a small town. And so if you look at the, if you look at the map, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of, or if any, high-density zones, this would be either the first or one of the first ones, and so I'm afraid it's just gonna be slippery slope if this gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment?
No further public comment. Any questions about the commission to any of the speakers or the applicant or anybody? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back to the, bring it back to the commission. Any discussion?
Another question.
Mr. Haran?
I don't, I don't live in the big city, so I'm pretty slow, and you need to explain to me again, why can't we do these seventy-five units under NDS as opposed to, why does that You have to speak slowly so I can understand.
The, the allowable density in, in a medium-density suburban zone is three dwelling units per acre detached. We do allow up to five units per acre for a mobile home park, which is what the applicant proposed and what was approved back in 2011, but...
So that's the difference.
That's the difference.
Okay, thank you. You spoke very slowly, I understand.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I had a question, and that was, interestingly, how many...
I do have a question, and that was, interestingly, how many high-density units exist in Sun
If you do, in your packet, you do have a map of the regulatory zone of Sun Valley, and what you'll find is that...
Be in Exhibit C, Page 3. Exhibit C, Page 3, okay. It's a thick...
Yeah, if you look at four of 16, that shows the regulatory zone map. It doesn't show the whole thing, it just, it's kind of focusing in on this property, but it does show some high-density zoned properties. In fact, there's, what you're looking at tonight is a request for high-density suburban, there's actually some urban zoning categories, low and medium-density urban regulatory zones in Sun Valley. And in fact, just last year, or maybe two years ago, this planning commission approved a low-density urban project in Sun Valley. But I don't know the actual number of them, there may be, you know, I can't tell you what the number of lots that are zoned high-density suburban or medium-density urban in Sun Valley are.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Discussion, are we in discussion yet?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, you may.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of the people that chose to attend today rather than stay home. Your testimony was compelling on both sides. I share the concerns about affordable housing in Washoe County, it's one of my chief concerns. But I also share the concerns of existing communities with regard to zone changes that allow development that is inconsistent with their style of living. And I appreciate the fact that citizens in Sun Valley have gone to a meeting Monday and Tuesday, and now here we are. What the hell is today, Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, whatever day it is, it's late. I respect you for coming out tonight and expressing those concerns. We are compelled to make our choices based on whether or not we feel the conditions are met. And from my perspective, I do not find that this is compatible with the existing land use. I do not find it will not adversely impact that public health, safety, or welfare. And that's just my opinion, and it's how I intend to vote. We're charged with making judgment calls, and I was going back and forth throughout this whole presentation. I appreciate what the developer is trying to do. I appreciate you trying to provide affordable housing. I just don't think it's appropriate here, and I don't think that 75 units is going to make the difference. I would encourage you to find other properties that's already zoned that way. I'm siding with the community on this one, and in my judgment, it is not in the community's best interest. I do think it will adversely impact the emotional well-being, the public health and safety and welfare. My two cents.
Any other discussion?
I have something to say. I understand the community's concern for this, but if you really look at what's going on here, it's already approved for 75 units as a mobile home park. All the developer is asking to do is to be able to subdivide this thing so that people can have legitimate ownership of the property to find affordable ways for people to live. And as was explained in the presentation, it was very clear that either you get Warren Buffett's two finance companies to finance you as a mobile home as personal property, or you either own the property and you have real property when you're through with it. And I think that, you know, this beats the pants off of living in an apartment someplace or living in a mobile home park because you actually own the piece of property. And so that's how I'm going to look at it. Is there any other further discussion from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Haran.
I tend to think more along the lines of the chair's comments relative to what the development is. I don't see the density increasing. I think the affordable housing is important, and, you know, you have to start somewhere, maybe 75 is not enough, but it's a start. I just feel like it is a change, you know, it's not, it's not going to, instead of mobile homes are going to be stick-built, so to speak, and the density is not increasing. I think it's, I'm going to be in favor of it.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to weigh back in. I respect the perspectives that I'm hearing. This 75 unit was a special use permit that was issued against the wishes of the community. And yeah, it was issued and it was allowing for 75 units. That's not what the existing land use is like out there. And so the first step is to get a special use permit, say, well, it's approved for 75 units. But you know what? It's not profitable. That's what I'm hearing. It's not profitable to do that. I think that the existing mobile home park, that's affordable housing. The difference here is that it's more affordable, it's easier to market in this fashion, and I buy into it. I do, I buy into it. It's easier to market that way. So I think what we have going on here is a step that you had a special use permit issued, you got a condition that wasn't favorable to the neighborhood, they balked at it then, they're balking at it now. And so we continue to say, well, you know, it's just this thing, or that'll be addressed here, or that'll be addressed down the road. I'm not seeing that. And so I, again, would just say that I respect your opinions and your perspectives, and I just needed to say that. That's no, I don't see that, well, it's already there. It's already there against the wishes of the community. This is just another step to allow it to be, to continue to expand. And the young lady over here that spoke about the slippery slope, I agree with her. You know, what's to prevent the next person to come in and say, well, you know, I'm going to buy all these 130-acre things? No, I want high-density too, you just did it for that guy, why not me? And make the same argument. So again, I don't think it's in the best, I don't think it's in, not, I'd find it inconsistent with the findings, and I'll shut up.
Any further comment? Mr. Haran?
This is, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate everybody's opinions. I think what I enjoy mostly about serving on this board is that we have differences of opinions, and we vote the way we feel and interpret the presentations and respect each other's opinions. So I think that's one of the things that this board does very well.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I'm still here.
Yes, Lord.
What I would, to echo what my fellow commissioners have said, what I would add to this is that what we're seeing before us tonight is an opportunity to provide affordable homeownership as opposed to having developers put in something that would, because there's, from what I'm reading through here in terms of real property versus personal property, is that this will accommodate, once we get through the process, but I just remind everyone that may still be in the audience that this is the first step of many steps, this is a regulatory zone amendment. And it matters that affordable homeownership is what our communities are striving for. That's my final comment.
Any further comment? Then I will call for a motion.
I'm on. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the planning commission recommends adoption of the proposed regulatory zone amendment, case number WRZA17-006, having made all of the following findings in accordance with Washoe County Development Code, Section 110, 82115D. I further move to certify the resolution, the proposed regulatory zone amendment in WRZA17-006, as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners, and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the planning commission.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Haran and a second by Commissioner Doncheck. I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposing?
Nay.
Okay, passes six to one. Okay. Let me find my gin.
It's stuck in the back page. We're not done. We're not done.
All right, moving right along here. Chair and commission items, any future agenda items? Any requests for information from staff? Any legal counsel items or director's items?
Yeah, I have a couple of items to address. At the last planning commission meeting, it was asked of staff to have a discussion of cargo containers and where we are, the status. At this time, it is certainly something that planning is going to bring back at some point. However, to be quite honest, staff has quite a bit on its plate right now. We're in one of the busiest times that we've all experienced, and so it is on our priority list, however, it's not at the very top, so that's what I can offer at this point. Also, at the last meeting, there was a request to provide the status on the overall map for approved unbuilt developments in Washoe County, and it is, again, similar to the last project. It is something that our staff is currently working on in terms of an overall map that is consistent with Washoe County's map that you all have seen. In the meantime, however, regional staff has a tool on their website, and I've forwarded that to all of you in an email that provides a link to a pretty good map program. One of the challenges that we're facing in that regard is that it doesn't, it doesn't translate exactly the way that Washoe County looks at approved unbuilt maps. In fact, most of the developments in the cities are done through what's known as a PUD, a public, sorry, planned unit development, and they have a handbook, and so the correspondence is a little different than an approved tentative map, but we are working on that. And I would invite you all to go take a look at what regional has done. They've done a terrific job in mapping just that through all three jurisdictions. Also, wanted to just bring your attention to essentially a new CAB program that the county commission adopted on January 23rd. With that, there's a new CAB schedule that will provide for more efficiency in their CAB meetings. They were having a lot of cancellation of meetings, or it wasn't really corresponding with a lot of the projects that we had had. In addition to that, the county commission endorsed that the Cabs would primarily be looking at development projects and not so much at some of the other issues that typically come before them. Also, planners, we're going to take a much more active role in these, the CAB, in the CAB meetings, and we'll work with the Cabs, and hopefully we'll have more efficient CAB meetings in that regard. We look forward to that, and we've had a training to that effect over the last week. We had several trainings to help staff in that role. So we can anticipate that we'll be more active with the Cabs. Finally, just wanted to bring your attention to what staff has been doing in regards to the upcoming regional plan update, and you can anticipate an email from staff over the next week or so, and we ask you to participate in a survey that we put together. It's a survey through a MetroQuest program. Take a look at that. We think it's very user-friendly, I hope you enjoy the survey, but it's really important that you also get the word out that we're looking for input from the communities, so your friends, your family, take that survey as well.
Is this a, is this a survey separate from the one that the regional planning commission just completed?
It is. It looks very much like that. It's through the same program.
Okay.
But it's specific for Washoe County.
I want to make sure that it wasn't the same thing again.
Oh, it's just for Washoe County.
Specific, yeah.
Okay, great. Is that it, Trevor?
Well, I have, yeah.
That's it? Okay, let's see. Nate, you got anything?
Real quickly, there was a question tonight about that condition pertaining to discovery of historical artifacts or remains. I did quite a bit of research here, up here at the dais tonight on that, and I'll be, I'll be working with staff to address some of the nuances of that because I think there's maybe some tweaking that could be done with respect to that. And it's too incipient at this point to proffer my full conclusion at this point, but just wanted to let you know that I found that to be an intriguing issue, and I delved into that tonight quite a bit, actually, in between, in between my use of, in between my use of the microphone. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Nate. Any general...
Mr. Flammen?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, Nate, I truly appreciate your willingness to look into that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, I hope you have a good time. Where are you at?
Good night, Sarah.
I'm in Fort Collins, Colorado, and it's very cold here. We're doing a professional development training for new career staff.
Oh, good for you. Well, thank you, Sarah. Okay, there's no, any general public comment?
No public comment.
I'll call for a...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.